All right, Stephanie, how are you?
No, I just wanted to say that Rachel was...
Well, this is the last place you want to be, then.
Well, we'll try to make it quick and painless.
I'd like to call over the North Canton Special Committee of the Whole Agenda Meeting Monday, October 10th, 2016, 6:35. Clerk, please go.
Here. Here.
Here.
Keezlin, Peters.
Here.
Emery.
Here.
My presence is evident.
Thank you. Motion to second to excuse Members Keezlin, Foles.
To who?
Second.
Fuante.
Yes.
Gravett.
Yes.
Peters.
Yes.
Lanning.
Yes.
And Sir Gravett.
Yes.
I just excuse Councilman Foles and Councilman Keezlin.
Okay. First step to meeting economic development, since Congress is not here, I'll speak briefly on this. And this is on the agenda following this. It's basically just a resolution in support of a countywide study of broadband. And whatever comes of that, I think they do a collateral plan. That's really about it. This is basically ceremonial, for lack of better terms. To pledge our support for continued research and stuff. Any comments or anything?
It's important to look at that for the future. I mean, your report that they cross motion for work, it would be all a challenge.
I think all counties doing it. I mean, there's our broadband initiative on Wednesday morning.
Wednesday.
What's the huge effect of the broadband?
Industrial centers, aviation centers.
So we're all... Wednesday said they're... Okay. A little workup. All right, moving on to finance and broadband. Chairman.
I'll let Florida do the discussion. Every year we... I still live under first before I do that. She become accustomed to you. She is not aware. Every year we provide just a general synopsis to the auditor and make sure that we are essentially a solace. This is our tradition to do so. Is that a lesson that a conference or what else is there?
It is. And this is just kind of the formal way of asking them to levy hard impacts on our behalf. And in looking at what they estimated to us for last year, it was very close to what we actually received. So the numbers that you see should be close to what we receive this year. And this just needs to be taken care of by the end of the month, so it needs to be submitted.
That's why we do now is because we're doing our other legend cycle, but it's kind of the first set of legend cycles. Any questions relative to the tax budget or the certification ones? All right. And we need to put that on as well.
Yes, that is on.
Is that where you see that? Since passing up any...
It is because of our schedule. Yes.
Okay.
It's on here.
All right, that concludes the agenda. We will start again in about eight minutes. Motion to adjourn.
Double.
Second.
Fair to say aye.
Aye.
Both same time, fair adjourn.
Laura, still not enough?
Are you going to score up these the whole time, Mary?
Roy, five more.
Yeah. Start the six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, nineteen, twenty. The ten was... He was like, "That'd be a shame if we aren't going to be able to..." But he waited to shake.
That's right.
Oh, did you realize that? We're going to go on some standard.
So I'm sure the crowd will be ready for that thing. You're mistaken.
It's not a problem with such problems. Okay.
The people are shaking, guys.
Yes.
Yes.
Oh, that was...
That happened this one night, so now we're...
Oh, there it is.
Doug, my lady.
So that's something to score on. We've got to stay away from that.
This is just a... This three, yeah, this one.
She says, "It's a lot of..." Pretty much. Yeah.
We also had a... Now we're so ready for it.
Just you and I both. I can't find you. They just think you're in absolute sleep. Do you get nauseous? You know, my things are terrible. And I can forget it's a softener, so she's... I can't change my teeth and I can't wait to know what. I could, but now I touch those scrutiny, I just stop. I'll... Yeah. What? Yeah. How about... Not like... Yeah, that's like... And usually I can catch them already.
Yeah. I felt like a play fight, so I just thought... Saying for me to tell us. If you were to ask me, I would say, "No, my God." It's not my choice. That's the way we're doing it on this show. That's what's...
He is speaking. Paul Rayce now is Speaker's President.
I'm still... Let me get this out of there. Yeah, it's just...
Too much. Sure. My...
I know.
Yeah.
Right. Follow right there. From people, from following this.
You should work on her.
How I don't like it. We're all going to have a ratchet. I think that now, maybe anybody wants... It's a issue. But you know, we have a petition for... Yeah, that I did. Right, because it meant nothing. You know, you said, "Oh, man." There, like, there's a... Hold it.
They support Trump. The woman who... I'm just... Because they're... That's what they do. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah, now, yeah.
I'm not like, "Yeah." Some of the folks will be like, "I'm not..." "Somebody..."
Yeah.
So all you have to do is pitch it up. That's... Let it go way out. I want to make sure you're not trying to... I'm trying to fight some... Yeah. Right.
So does he sit here?
Just know until he's one of those. To give certain things.
Right, Jeff. Yeah. They sound...
The high school flag.
All right, read your statement.
All right, I'd like to call over Council meeting Monday, October 10th, 2016, 7:00 PM. Forward prayer, Reverend Sarah Taylor Beck, North Canton Community Christian Church. Welcome.
Thank you. Just want to say that over here. God, this is a time of high emotion. It's a time with loud voices. We pray that you are a spirit of calm, that we can all seek to listen and to understand. That in a time with great confusion over the difference between uniformity and unity, in a time of great division, that you remind us that we can seek unity even without uniformity. In a time of conflict, help us all to be bridge brothers, to be neighbors to one another, to be respectful and kind and compassionate and peaceful. This is the good work of local governments, local leadership. May everything of us...
Ready, ladies and gentlemen?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Clerk, please go.
Sir Gravett.
Here.
Foles.
Here.
Fuante.
Here.
Gravett.
Here.
Peters.
Here.
Emery.
Here.
Six questions, sir president.
Thank you. They have a motion to second to excuse Members Keezlin. Show move.
Gravett. Foles.
Yes.
Fuante.
Yes.
Gravett.
Yes.
Peters.
Yes.
Lanning.
Yes.
And Sir...
Yes.
Sitchett, excuse me, because one...
All right, for your consideration, the motion to second to approve that special committee of the whole meeting minutes, September 26th, 2016. Special committee of the whole meeting minutes, September 26th, 2016. Committee of the whole meeting minutes, October 3rd, 2016. Mayor's court receipts for August 2016. Financial statement for August 2016, no time reports. Motion to approve as presented.
Second.
Fuante.
Yes.
Gravett.
Yes.
Peters.
Yes.
Lanning.
Yes.
Sir Gravett.
Yes.
And Foles.
Yes.
Sitchett, to implement the law of courts and...
All right, thank you. This time for new chair of council, please step forward, state your name and address. Mr. Ray, try to...
Took off 1307 Perry Street, Southeast and North Kingman, Ohio. Back in April, when I heard about the abatement of nearly a million dollars over the term of the abatement period, that didn't sound right. I didn't even do any research. And I called that revelation unconscionable. And Mayor, if you recall, I gave you a letter, heard you need to dismiss its revolts. I'm sure we can all argue whether you moved in that direction or not, or whether there are other reasons, doesn't make any difference. Just on the face of it, it was just uncautious. I can't come up with another word. On tonight's agenda, if you have a resolution that is merely what you described in the same manner as Resolution 6, to basically turn a portion of our governmental processes that involve the average and everyday citizen into almost a court-like atmosphere. And for anybody that's not aware of it, is to make a portion of the planning commission, it's going to deal with conditional use permits and adjudication area, where you want people sworn in. I guess it's not enough that they come up here in public, on the record, it's transcribed verbally, that will be kept in our archives as long as North Canton exists on the face of the earth. You don't believe? You want them sworn in. It's a little intimidating. And as much as you got, as you people think, I am going to come up here, call me and speak to you. You really don't. But I'm compelled to when I see what goes on here occasionally. You want to go see the results of a judicial hearing, Mr. Fox voiced his plan at a December planning commission meeting, and it was a self-hour, and it was for his church. It was a circus. He demands that everybody bring their own attorney. I don't know how many, maybe a dozen attorneys we had there at night. It lasted three hours. He told people if he didn't take the oath, your contribution to the process wasn't going to be recognized. Prior to the eventual vote by the planning commission, our law director, in my viewpoint, placed himself as if he was the presiding judge issuing jury instructions. The five years of the planning commission, for themselves, nervous, cats on a hot roof, trying to be whatever Mr. Fox wanted him to be. It is obvious, and we've all talked about it a few years, that Mr. Fox doesn't care for me, and I'm not a fan of Mr. Fox. It's not funny, Mr. Fox.
I'm not like...
But I can keep your personalities totally out of it and look at just the issue. And I don't know if anybody comprehends what's going on. Mr. Fox has arrived here on the scene, and he places himself in the middle. If every one of these meetings, gatherings, needs commandeering council, I urge you to leave the ordinance, those only orders alone, it's worked like that since 1961, it's worked satisfactorily. This is not government of Mr. Fox, it's not a government by Mr. Fox, and it's not a government for Mr. Fox. So I would urge you to just totally trash that, there's no reason to change it. And by the way, anything that happens up here, whether it's the planning conditions, whether it's council meetings, it's all open for litigation. The pinpoint, condition of use hearings, you would have to change everything regarding city council operations government, because everything is open for litigation. So please, do not make government an adversarial partner. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. If I may before the next person begins.
I did speak to council president this evening, and I spoke to our Director of Permits and Development, and we made the recommendation that we table that ordinance, simply because our director wishes to take that straight to the planning commission. And although Mr. Osborne likes to say that I interject myself into these issues, point in fact is that the Courts of Appeals have interjected themselves into these planning commission types of meetings and state quite clearly that these types of meetings, a conditional use permit is required. It doesn't say, "Tim Fox says this," the Court of Appeals states that it's required for a conditional use permit that the planning commission have a adjudication hearing, because it's an issue of property rights and issues involving evidence. And that's quite different from a public meeting where folks are welcome to come in and give their opinions and beliefs and suggestions and recommendations. However, when you're dealing with someone's rights to develop their property, they have a right to make sure that the hearing for that purpose is an adjudication hearing that involves rights, evidence, and so forth. But we'll take this up with the planning commission, if you take that recommendation table.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Anyone else wishing to... Does counsel please step forward?
Hi. Good evening, everyone. I think at prior meetings, there's been discussions about the properties around North Ridge and how they were helped revitalize the area. So Mary and I would like to put forward this timeline. October 28th, 2008, excuse me, a murder occurred in Evergreen Mobile Home Park. It was an isolated incident due to an altercation between two men. 2009, Jester House Agency built a new office building close to Evergreen. 2009, Sherman Williams built a new building close to Evergreen. December 2010, CBS bought land close to Evergreen and built a new building. January 2011, O'Reilly Auto Parts bought land close to Evergreen and built in the building. January 2012, developers bought Evergreen Mobile Home Park. November 2012, Walther's bought land close to Evergreen prior to North Ridge being built. Contrary to what developers have said, the area around Evergreen was revitalized before North Ridge was built. Before North Ridge was built, five businesses built new buildings in close proximity to Evergreen without receiving CRAs. These were the businesses that revitalized the Evergreen area and financially benefited the city with income tax, not North Ridge. There's no evidence North Ridge CRA has financially benefited the city in any way. North Canton Schools, many employees are paying income taxes that benefit the city financially. North Ridge CRA is depriving our schools of much-needed revenue. North Ridge drains city services without paying taxes for those services. There is evidence that each of the apartments on Whole Road, Beachwood, and 800 Evermark, which are three apartment complexes, had as many police and EMS calls as the Evergreen Mobile Home Park. This proves Evergreen was not the only trouble spot in North Canton. Please find alternative ways for economic development other than CRAs, which are financially hurting our school, one of the city's largest... Thank you.
Thank you.
Sorry.
Mary, you thought of the people that go there. Someone asked for a copy of the clerk, because counsel received it, your clerk hasn't received it. If you wish to have the clerk receive those types of things, because someone may make a plaintiff request. If you only provide those to council members, and they make a request from your clerk, it's not available.
Yeah, I can do mine.
We can make a copy of it quick.
That's a good recommendation.
You might want to start your time.
Mary.
Mary, I often think to people, "Mary, I know that the table Resolution 616 that I did a lot of, but I just want to talk to you." The amendment to Chapter 1177, Section 117.05, goes to say, "Planning Commission, change public hearings to adjudicatory hearings, so residents can take an oath before speaking, and this is part of condition use." I contacted and received answers from law directors of the City of Canton, the City of Watford, the City of Green, Jackson Township, and Stark County Regional Planning Commission regarding requiring residents taking an oath before speaking at any of their planning commission public hearings. All of the above told me no. Residents do not have to take an oath before speaking. There's been an Ohio law reference, which I heard tonight was Fields Court. To me, as far as I know, it's the Ohio Revise Code that's our law, not Fields Court. Canton is not a charter city and has to follow Ohio law. If there is a law, why is it Canton, having residents taken oath at planning commission public hearings? And why isn't Stark County Regional Planning Commission requiring residents to take an oath before speaking during public hearings? It is difficult for some residents to speak during public hearings. Why add to their anxiety by having to take an oath? Please do not allow this change to a ordinance that has worked for many hearings. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary. Thank you.
It's correct to remember.
Okay. Anyone else wish to address council, please step forward. Take your hand in there. We move on to ordinance. We have a motion in a second to read by title only the first reading of ordinance number 62-16. So moved.
Second.
Wretton?
Yes.
Peters?
Yes.
Waring?
Yes.
Surratt?
Yes.
Golds?
Yes.
Fontaine?
Yes.
Six chefs to read by title only the first reading of ordinance number 62, 2016. And ordinance will have the right of immunity to the city in North Canton to determine how it files a case 9.48 to participate in joint purchasing programs with other political subdivisions for the purchase of machinery, materials, and supplies used by various city departments specifically to join the National Joint Purchasers Alliance for set purpose.
Chairman Griffin.
This is a joint purchasing group, as it says. And Mike, you did a great job describing it a week ago. No downside for us, just an opportunity to collaborate with other institutions, institution, which, in addition to the others that were already in our... There are no other questions? I would move to move.
Second.
Peters?
Yes.
Waring?
Yes.
Surratt?
Yes.
Golds?
Yes.
Fontaine?
Yes.
and Wretton?
Yes.
Six chefs to adopt the first reading of ordinance number 62, 2016.
Thank you. We have a motion in a second to read by title only the first reading of ordinance number 66-16. So moved. Second.
Waring?
Yes.
Surratt?
Yes.
Golds?
Yes.
Fontaine?
Upstate.
Wretton?
Yes.
and Peters?
Yes.
Five yes, one to abstain to read by title only the first reading of ordinance number 66, 2016. And ordinance will only conduct in name of all city of North Canton community investment areas. Turning in the city's CRA program for new residential, commercial, and industrial tax exemption applications for new structure, redevelopment, and remodeling as may be permitted under Ohio laws specifically for Ohio revise of Sections 3735.65 through 3735.70, thereby repealing all local legislative provisions in existing new legislation. This part of North Canton ordinance is 2299, 106, 2007, 1, 094, 107, 2009, and 5, 2010.
Thank you, Vice Chair Surratt. I may, uh, may basically say that all. We are stripping the CRAs from the books and hit reset button. It's been a convoluted mess up to this point, and this is the first step in direction of fixing it. So there's no further comment on the motion in a second to adopt the first reading of ordinance number 66-16. Motion for first reading.
I make a comment.
Yeah, yeah.
So, you know, last week, I mean, pretty much we talked about this, and as you know, and I yes, I agree that rules that exist right now is constructed and it's difficult for schools, and we all have our need areas, and we all try to do the best we can. And, you know, I believe in development and wanting the city to grow as strong as we can. It's just in downtown Canton the other day, too, and I was so impressed with what they've done. I know again from experience, and I don't know what they've done. And that's what I love because I don't know. And so was it something creative, or was it something that they, you know, took parts of this and parts of that? And I've heard Daryl comment on that, and he mentioned that last week. And so I do think, I let me say, we have to get the reset and get some different partners and so what, whether it's a new committee that we start, or be on that committee, and just make a start over. Maybe there were things that we could do differently and better, and I know Eric, you know, he gave us a shaker plan, and, but maybe it was deep. And it didn't seem all that good when they presented it. So maybe there's just new things we can look at and move forward in some way, so.
I'm glad you mentioned Canton as well, because I drove, we were up there a couple weeks ago, drove through there, and it's unbelievable.
Unbelievable.
What they've done.
Yeah.
And I thought the exact same thing.
Block after block, right.
Well, we want to talk to a lot of it with alumni donations from alumni that were...
Well, even in downtown Canton, a lot of that we're watching.
No, no, it's me. Just to add, they have a lot of academic, higher transportation money, public works money. They really leverage what they can do with grant dollars to do those programs. You know, that whole so that, and some will get a local road that makes better, local good. So it all came together because but the gateway is a big part of it. I just want to summarize it, so. It's beautiful.
You know, equalizing, I just, you've been to seminars, and so maybe there's just different ways that I've mentioned so many of those equal cities, and we want us to be that. I envision that, and that it just will take a little time to get there, and I don't want us to not have some of these tools for Gary.
Right. I agree. I think Gary is a little about Gary that at Queensley and looking at some other options and study this and read back his opinion, you know, and his expertise, and we can all look around and bring it to the table. See what we can do as a presence and get this right. Get a less accusing, more active, hopefully, for at least some of the residential, see how it affects everybody, schools, our city service, everybody included. Not just be one side of it, but look at it all encompassing and work toward better than recommend, and think that's what everybody up there, obviously. So we've had great discussion on it, so I support the first reading, unless there's other doubts.
One of the major issues that we have to deal with is there are some pieces that has to be revoked because it was done incorrectly in 2009, 2010. So let's not, we can't forget that regardless of set values for the future, we've got to do some revocation, which is an issue. But I really do think, and I'm also fully committed to this, taking away some of the big development tools for what's there is a real problem. Now, having said that, I think what we had before was a sledgehammer. And what we need to be creating is a much more nuanced tool, something that's available where we can all, as a city, as a community, as a school district, get behind it and say, this is the kind of development we really, development we really would want. Not just how it looks and how it feels, but economically something that would be of benefit to us. So I want, I want us to be committed to moving forward in a way that also would be a collaborative approach between us and the school districts that would not be a sledgehammer, but we'd be much more nuanced. And we have to continue to be pro-development. I think in North Canton, we often make the mistake of assuming that because things have always been good, that they will always be good. And that is not the case. We have to work to make them good, and we need to have as many tools as possible to do that. So I reluctantly support this because we need to, but an equally as committed to moving forward with thoughtful, productive development in the future.
Motion. Okay, there was a motion. Is there anything second to adopt?
Second.
Surratt?
Yes.
Golds?
Yes.
Fontaine?
Upstate.
Wretton?
Yes.
Peters?
Yes.
and Waring?
Yes.
Five yes, one to abstain to adopt the first reading of ordinance number 66, 2016.
Thank you. We have a motion in a second to read by title only the first reading of ordinance number 67-16.
So moved.
Okay. Golds?
Yes.
Fontaine?
Yes.
Wretton?
Yes.
Peters?
Yes.
Waring?
Yes.
and Surratt?
Yes.
Six chefs to read the title only the first reading of ordinance number 67, 2016. And ordinance will confirm and accept the natural offer and trade known as parcel number 560944 and can push on the C by between the city of North Canton and Altria Municipal Corporation City 3T and the Central Oil Substitution Company near Thor and it's currently seen to be an emergency.
Mr. Griffin.
Okay, we talked about this last week. This is just something that we're tidying up some business. It's an existing, um, driving area that nice tone with Surratt lines. And we're just cleaning it up, so we're looking at it on as emergency, so I hope that we pass the first reading.
Second.
Fontaine?
Yes.
Wretton?
Yes.
Peters?
Yes.
Waring?
Yes.
Surratt?
Yes.
and Golds?
Yes.
Six chefs to adopt the first reading of ordinance number 67, 2016.
We have a motion in a second to suspend the rules of council for three readings for ordinance number 67-16.
Second.
Waring?
Yes.
Peters?
Yes.
Waring?
Yes.
Surratt?
Yes.
Golds?
Yes.
Fontaine?
Yes.
Six chefs to suspend the rules of council for three readings for ordinance number 67, 2016.
We have a motion in a second to adopt under suspension of the rules ordinance number 67-16.
So moved.
Second.
Peters?
Yes.
Waring?
Yes.
Surratt?
Yes.
Golds?
Yes.
Fontaine?
Yes.
Surratt?
Yes.
Six chefs to read by title only the first rule of the ordinance number 67, 2016.
Thank you. We have a motion in a second to read by title only the first reading of ordinance number 68-16.
So moved.
Second.
Waring?
Yes.
Surratt?
Yes.
and Golds?
Yes.
Fontaine?
Yes.
Wretton?
Yes.
and Peters?
Yes.
Six chefs to read by title only the first reading of ordinance number 68, 2016. And ordinance will confirm and accept the natural offer and trade arrangement known as parcel number 100944 being part of Alflack number 401 by between the city of North Canton and Altria Municipal Corporation 3T and the City Apple Road of T P Great Thor, and it's currently seen to be an emergency.
Thank you, Chairman Griffin.
Okay, so this is the new section of the sanctuary where they are expanding it, and this is the same thing as the last one, but it's a new section which is not going to cooperate. I think we pass that on urgency.
Second.
Surratt?
Yes.
Golds?
Yes.
Fontaine?
Yes.
Wretton?
Yes.
Peters?
Yes.
and Waring?
Yes.
Six chefs to read by title only the first reading of ordinance number 68, 2016.
Thank you. We have a motion in a second to suspend the rules of council for three readings for ordinance number 68-16.
So moved.
Second.
Golds?
Yes.
Fontaine?
Yes.
Peters?
Yes.
Waring?
Yes.
and Surratt?
Yes.
Six chefs to suspend the rules of council for three readings for ordinance number 68, 2016.
Thank you. We have a motion in a second to adopt under suspension of the rules ordinance number 68-16.
So moved. Second.
Fontaine?
Yes.
Wretton?
Yes.
Peters?
Yes.
Waring?
Yes.
Surratt?
Yes.
and Golds?
Yes.
Six chefs to adopt in respect of the rules for ordinance number 68, 2016.
Thank you. We have a motion in a second to read by title only the first reading of ordinance number 69-16.
So moved. Second.
Wretton?
Yes.
Peters?
Yes.
Waring?
Yes.
Surratt?
Yes.
Golds?
Yes.
and Fontaine?
Yes.
Six chefs to read by title only the first reading of ordinance number 69, 2016. And ordinance will amend course in effect by ordinance 911.01b, criteria for need change in order to minimize pedestrian and traffic confusion and to optimize safety and efficiency of traffic flow and turn the city to be an emergency.
Thank you, Chairman Griffin.
Okay, just to state it, it's just to create easier access for deliveries and whatnot for people to find the alley and it's on emergency, and I absolutely approve that.
Second.
Peters?
Yes.
Waring?
Yes.
Surratt?
Yes.
Golds?
Yes.
Fontaine?
Yes.
and Wretton?
Yes.
Six chefs to read by title only the first reading of ordinance number 69, 2016.
Thank you. We have a motion in a second to suspend the rules of council for three readings for ordinance number 69-16.
So moved. Second.
Waring?
Yes.
Surratt?
Yes.
Golds?
Yes.
Fontaine?
Yes.
Wretton?
Yes.
and Peters?
Yes.
Six chefs to suspend the rules of council for three readings for ordinance number 69, 2016.
We finally have a motion in a second to adopt under suspension of the rules ordinance number 69-16.
So moved.
Second.
Surratt?
Yes.
Golds?
Yes.
Fontaine?
Yes.
Wretton?
Yes.
Peters?
Yes.
and Waring?
Yes.
Six chefs to adopt in respect of the rules for ordinance number 69, 2016.
All right. We have a motion in a second to read by title only the first reading of ordinance number 70-16.
So moved.
Second.
Golds?
Yes.
Fontaine?
Yes.
Wretton?
Yes.
Peters?
Yes.
Waring?
Yes.
and Surratt?
Yes.
Six chefs to read by title only the first reading of ordinance number 70, 2016. And ordinance operates in near the city of Canton to enter into agreement cooperation with the city of Canton for the purpose of permitting Canton to locate a monitoring water well on the property known as the Oster's property and apply the city of North Canton to turn the city to be an emergency.
Thank you, Chairman Surratt.
Well, we talked about this in committee that Canton needs a monitoring well. Their source water protection point D is a site on our land is a best place for it. They will be paying for it, so if you would say there's a downside to it, and it's a win-win, so I hope we approve this in first reading.
Second.
Fontaine?
Yes.
Wretton?
Yes.
Peters?
Yes.
Waring?
Yes.
Surratt?
Yes.
and Golds?
Yes.
Six chefs to adopt the first reading of ordinance number 70, 2016.
Thank you. We have a motion in a second to suspend the rules of council for three readings for ordinance number 70-16.
So moved.
Second.
Wretton?
Yes.
Peters?
Yes.
Waring?
Yes.
Surratt?
Yes.
Golds?
Yes.
Fontaine?
Yes.
Six chefs to suspend the rules of council for three readings for ordinance number 70, 2016.
Thank you. We have a motion in a second to adopt under suspension of the rules ordinance number 70-16.
So moved.
Second.
Peters?
Yes.
Waring?
Yes.
Surratt?
Yes.
Holds.
Yes.
Fontaine.
Yes.
And Gravit.
Yes.
Six shifts to adopt in respect of the rules for ordinance number 70, 2016.
Thank you. May I have a motion and a second to read by title only the first reading of ordinance number 71-60.
So moved.
Second.
Waring.
Yes.
Sir Reddick.
Yes.
Holds.
Yes.
Fontaine.
Yes.
Waring.
Yes.
And Peters.
Yes.
Six shifts to read by title only the first reading of ordinance number 71, 2016. An ordinance authorized in Georgia, flying into the city of Brooklyn to make payments of plain township at an amount of $4,500,003 for annexation of re-tact operations to tax year 2015 and declaring the same to be an emergency.
Thank you, Chairman Serra.
This is a payment for unannexation that was done just over a decade ago, almost to the end, and it's a statute or a requirement. Any other questions? I move to.
Second.
Sir Reddick.
Yes.
Holds.
Yes.
Fontaine.
Yes.
Waring.
Yes.
Peters.
Yes.
And Waring.
Yes.
Six shifts to adopt the first reading of ordinance number 71, 2016.
Thank you. May I have a motion and a second to suspend the rules of counsel for three readings for ordinance number 71-60.
So moved.
Second.
Holds.
Yes.
Fontaine.
Yes.
Waring.
Yes.
Peters.
Yes.
Waring.
Yes.
And Sir Reddick.
Yes.
Six shifts to suspend the rules of counsel for three reading for ordinance number 71, 2016.
Thank you. May I have a motion and a second to adopt under suspension of the rules ordinance number 71-60.
So moved.
Second.
Fontaine.
Yes.
Waring.
Yes.
Peters.
Yes.
Waring.
Yes.
Sir Reddick.
Yes.
And Holds.
Yes.
Six shifts to adopt in respect of the rules for ordinance number 71, 2016.
Thank you. May I have a motion and a second to table resolution number 6-16?
So moved. Second.
Waring.
Yes.
Peters.
Yes.
Waring.
Yes.
Sir Reddick.
Yes.
Holds.
Yes.
Fontaine.
Yes.
Six shifts to table resolution 6, 2016.
Thank you. May I have a motion and a second to read by title only the first reading of resolution number 7-16?
So moved.
Second.
Peters.
Yes.
Waring.
Yes.
Sir Reddick.
Yes.
Holds.
Yes.
Fontaine.
Yes.
And Gravit.
Yes.
Six shifts to read by title only the first reading of resolution 7, 2016. The resolution in support of a county-wide study which may need to improve collaborative plan and support for next generation property and infrastructure.
Exactly how it reads, just a resolution in support and a reference to make mention there's a practice this Wednesday. Where is that?
Uh, it's in the subscription process.
All right, very good.
I got an email from the patient. They told me they did a survey, survey results and kind of nice stats and.
I do think it was in the chamber of the thing, we should call in and I think it was in the last letter that, you know, to. So I like the idea. But I move that we proceed with it.
Second.
Waring.
Yes.
Sir Reddick.
Yes.
Holds.
Yes.
Fontaine.
Yes.
Waring.
Yes.
And Peters.
Yes.
Six shifts to adopt the first reading of resolution 7, 2016.
Thank you. May I have a motion and a second to read by title only the first reading of resolution number 8-16?
So moved.
Second.
Will we be asking resolution seven?
No, we're good.
Okay.
Yes, so.
It was a resolution, did we pass it?
Yeah, number seven. We just did number seven.
Okay.
You read it. It takes one reading for a ceremonial resolution.
Right, there you go.
Thank you.
This was for the reading made.
Yes.
This one, this one, going through. I still have yet to receive the motion.
Motion.
Second.
Sir Reddick.
Yes.
Holds.
Yes.
Fontaine.
Yes.
Waring.
Yes. Peters.
And Waring.
Yes.
Six shifts to read by title only the first reading of ordinance number 8, 2016. The resolution in support of the amount of rates and passing channels by budget commission and authorizing necessary tax limits and supplying them to the county line.
Chairman Serra.
Uh, this is a discussion, a new treaty that relates to our tax laws. I move to.
Second.
Peters.
Yes.
Fontaine.
Yes.
Waring.
Yes.
Peters.
Yes.
Waring.
Yes.
And Sir Reddick.
Yes.
Six shifts to adopt the first reading of resolution 8, 2016.
Thank you very much.
Excuse me, you can do that on emergency to. More reading, she just said first reading.
Reports, Chairman Fong, or, uh, Member Fong. Chairman of the street. Two things, one was, uh, for engineers, if you just, you may not be ready tonight, but we're just curious, we've been talking a lot about the roads. It seems like this year we got off to a slow start, so we just want to know how we're doing with that, so maybe let us know either tonight or another day. Uh, and the second thing is, uh, a citizen mentioned to me about Tristan Rubber that's so close to the wellhead and just sits there rotting away, you know. Uh, I didn't know if you knew anything, what the status was of Tristan Rubber, would that be something of interest to us? That they were selling it to control and protect the wellhead area, so I just wanted to mention that if anybody has some information, they would come up with that. That's all.
Thank you. Number four.
Jim, I have a question for you. I noticed on one of the emails, the bridge of the copper that's going to be done in Eastell. I thought that construction was starting now, hereabouts, and it looks like it's moved to 2017. For money reasons, timing, what was the reason?
Uh, as ODOT project.
Okay.
They're paying for everything.
Right.
Or it could be.
Okay, so is that effective because I know we're putting Eastell possibly on the, um, pavement?
Right.
Are we going to wait?
No.
Okay.
Bridge was going to be replaced.
Right.
Uh, there's two high pressure gas veins there.
Right.
Cost to relocate those, uh, eight hundred to a million dollars, ODOT said, according to all their options. So we're going to rehab the, uh, structure in place and not have to tear it out, uh, and to take out the road. We are going to, uh, pay Eastell, we're going to do our portion of Eastell, uh, basically just east of the bridge and we'll continue to the corporation limit.
Yeah.
When ODOT does the bridge, they're going to be, uh, put the cat cases and storm work above ground or above the bridge. Uh, when they do that, they'll resurface the portion from where we stopped over to Main Street, and that's supposed to be placed next year.
Okay, uh, Plano, we did the other portion of Eastell, so it's, it's really nice and supportive and great. So, and thank you also, there's cars being built on Eastell that had a lot of issues, um, well, but thanks, and it's, what they're doing is beautiful. And thank you for working with them, and I know that was a lot of time and money and, uh, that person's, uh, so thank you. No reports, you know. In honor of those.
Well, first and foremost, you need to win to do nothing, so that's a good reward for that. Um, I'll second the report on the road of James over there. I don't know what, or listen. What is the temperature rating for that? I mean, we're coming to mid-July, October, again, same thing we were talking about. When is that temperature, things start changing, we can't do it where it works. And then, uh, and I'm glad to see that we were walking up and down Saway, even though it's been almost four months for Saway, they're like, they're getting some curbs in. Don't know what to deal with with that. And then, um, I believe it's back over there by the school, we're a little, maybe a report on where that's at, but, uh, that started when the school started, I think we all know that, the first day, uh, of school, and it still sits there with those, those orange barrels. And that is a highly, highly trafficked that road for the buses, so we need to look at that. And more importantly, and I won't be criticizing, we need to look at that for the future, that's what, that's what we need to. We can't be doing that kind of thing to busy roads in the future. I don't care what the, the, uh, contractors want to do, really what it's paying for, we should have a better say in what's going on with roads that are that busy. So I've been hearing about it now for like three or four months from residents and people, especially ones that live there and the bus is going up and down, stopping when people go by. So we can do a better job, we're going to do a better job with that in the future. That's all.
No, I agree, uh, appreciate the payment that's getting, I know it's Naples, something along, and, uh, the secondary history we just paid to the damage, so. Hopefully the weather will calm down, it'll be any better than we want, so we're not all doing it good here, Jim, it's just, uh, we're just anxious to make it possible, we just want to see it, see how early we can do it, so, thank you. Director Fong.
Yes, there was a really good question that the resident had made earlier this evening. Need to state that isn't revised code, the law, and indeed it is, as is our local ordinances, our state constitution, rules from the ministry of agencies and so forth. Those are all rules or laws. However, our courts of appeal, when they hear cases involving those types of rules and laws, they make their interpretation of what those things mean, and that's called judgment law, court law, it's often called common law. And that actually controls, so when interpreting the revised code, if our appellate courts have spoke on the subject of certain things such as many municipalities making a mistake of having a public hearing regarding the judicial use permit, and then the courts go on to state that's a mistake. This is a, a hearing involving property rights, and those municipalities should be having adjudication hearings. And they discuss about placing people under oath, taking testimony, having exhibits of evidence, and so, so forth. So simply following the revised code in that it doesn't state that you're required to have this. However, when our appellate courts comment on that in their opinions, that is actually the requirement to, to follow the law. And if your law director was defending the, the city in a lawsuit or a hearing and so forth, and the issue came up to defend whether or not the city was following the law, you, you can't look to numbers and say, this municipality and this one and this one and this one, they all do it this way. If the courts have interpreted it a certain way, that is how that court is required to interpret it as well, so long as it's a, it's a superior court. And a, a good explanation of the fallacy of strength in numbers comes to mind. And recently I was at a training session, and the person that was delivering the, uh, the speech and the training had said, there were about sixty municipalities that were, were represented there, and the person said, "I'm going to bet that not a single one of your municipalities has what's called a personal information policy." And I was the only person that raised my hand, and he said, "Tell me how you're aware of that." And I said, "I, I got lucky, I, I read it in reading an inspection report from another municipality, and it got a deficiency, was written up for that, for not having that." And he had stated exactly there, it's required, it became part of the revised code a number of years ago. It wasn't fully advertised, if you will, it really didn't get out there, and those that get caught without having those, or worse yet, a public employee falling outside of the, the guidance of a personal information policy. It's a, it's a criminal penalty for that public employee for not protecting that type of per, personal information and for categorizing and so, and so forth. So the, the thought that the, the strength in numbers argument somehow supports you, it actually doesn't. You have to be up on these things, and simply because other municipalities do not have adjudication hearings or their conditional use permits, doesn't state that, well, we should just follow that streak of numbers because our appellate courts have spoken quite clearly, and actually they're, they're sticking that, they're kind of frustrated with this because oftentimes they have to send these appeals back to the municipalities because they didn't have this type of hearing, and they actually didn't have sufficient evidence on the record because they simply had an open meeting where anyone could come and speak, give their opinion, their recommendations, their suggestions. And the courts aren't clear whether the planning commission is taking that information or actually parsing through and hitting the actual pieces of, of evidence and testimony that's before the planning commission. So although we recommended to take it out of this form, to take it to the planning commission, this is indeed what will present to the commission and ask that they make the recommendation to the council along with some other, uh, types of recommendations that we've all spoken about, that we need to, uh, update ourselves in our planning zone. That's all.
Thank you, Director Fias.
Um, in looking at the levies that you've heard this evening for next year, there is one that will expire at the end of next year, so I just want to make you aware of that, that's the annual CMS, that's a budget renewal. So you have three shots during 2017 to put that all about if you want to review that, so just kind of for the future.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor.
Thanks for your comment, Jim. Yes, uh, just to give everybody an update as far as the CRA, um, we do have, uh, at least, uh, first off, we'll take a step back and we look at this for the whole CRA appeal process. Uh, it's not like we had application forms, you know, we've never really went through in recent history, uh, appealing to the CRA. And so there's been a lot of talk about the CRA, and what the city can do, what the city should do, uh, whether it was filed correctly, whether it was not. Uh, so Gary Frye, who serves as our housing officer, uh, he did file, uh, a complaint or an appeal with the housing, uh, council. And, uh, that's really, uh, not taking a position either way, it's really just to present the information to the housing council so that they can make a determination, because when you look at the process, uh, Gary being the housing officer does report to, in his role as the housing officer, to the housing council. So if there's going to be any changes, uh, modifications, adjustments, any decisions on the CRA, it must go through the housing council, that's the first step. Um, so Gary went ahead and filed an appeal on Friday, uh, certainly with my, uh, support and approval and my friends as well. And I think that, uh, you know, we, we have to resolve this CRA, and that's specifically with North Canton. Uh, in addition to that, we did have, um, the, uh, North Canton City Schools that did send us a letter, uh, as far as a complaint. But when you look at the process, you know, there's certain requirements that have to be met, um, certain, um, exchanges of information that we have to have. So Gary also went through and put together an application process for a CRA approval. And that's nothing more than just to make sure that all of the information is required, such as, you know, who the, who's appealing it, your name, your address, uh, contact information, the purpose of the deal, things like that. Uh, so Gary went ahead and put that together, and it's just really to break, to formalize the structure for a CRA appeal. But we did have our Canton City Schools, they're represented by the legal counsel, the educational service center, that did, uh, send a letter of complaint or appeal. Uh, they still have to go through and formalize the process of that sort of application, I believe, too.
Yeah, there were just some questions about what exactly they were asking in their letter, uh, based on the ordinance, based on the, this, uh, revised code. I've been in contact with her legal counsel and, uh, will be getting back with her tomorrow to kind of formalize exactly what it is they are asking. Because it, it wasn't clear in the letter.
And then if you want to comment too, on the, uh, our residents also sent a letter.
Yeah, so, um, as Mayor said, last week, uh, last Monday's council meeting, we did receive a, um, somewhat of an appeal, uh, from some residents. Uh, in looking at what is required for the appeal, the, the required information that wasn't complete, I did send a letter back to those residents with an, an actual application. Um, we waited several days to, you know, see if they would, uh, resubmit that. Um, when they didn't on Friday, as the mayor mentioned, I did go ahead as the housing officer and submit my own appeal, asking the housing council to render a decision as to the efficacy of the, um, November twenty-sixth, two thousand and twelve, uh, housing officer decision. Um, it's not, in my role as housing officer, I can't overturn that, only the housing council can, uh, so I have asked them to make a decision. One way or the other, because I can't move forward in my role as housing officer without a decision on that.
And one of the other items too, that's been brought up, because again, this is not something that we normally go through when you look at a, an appeal, um, to the housing council, is that, uh, there has to be a method to formalize, um, you know, action. And so what we're doing is, uh, you know, we're, we're creating that mechanism. Uh, you know, for example, you know, uh, we had one of our officials ask, is there a deadline for appeals? No, there really isn't a deadline, but we just, you know, common sense would dictate that we just can't have, you know, week after week after week, have, have appeal. So that's really where the city, uh, it was actually Gary's recommendation for him, uh, you know, just so that operationally he can function in the office in reference to the CRAs, and, uh, at the time, I, uh, when we talked, I thought that that would be a good move, just to bring some sort of resolution to it. But we want everybody to be aware that there has been, uh, at least, uh, you know, the schools, the Stark, uh, the Stark County Educational Service Center, their attorney who's representing the North Canton City Schools filed a complaint. But Gary's working with them to make sure that they're going through the application, the appeal application process. that they're going through the application, the appeal application process. And then also when our residents had filed a complaint or an appeal, we're making sure that they go through the same steps, just so there's consistency with that. And then there's no date that's been set yet for the, for the housing council meeting, but we do have, you know, all members in place and we'll go through the process. And so that's all I have on the CRA. The next that I know that we do have is the Stark County Development, Stark County Board of Development, they have a new.
Director.
Director, right, thank you.
Ray Hex.
And Ray Hex, yes, you are on top of it. Maybe you should come on this.
I love Ray. He's great. He was wrestling development and they looked around and they did a search and he's open-minded, he's progressive, he's owned businesses, he's been involved in a lot of community, different services and just things very strategically, collaboratively. And I saw both of them downstairs and I said, "Hey, we want to hear more, you know, we need help, we want to be better partners, and what would be more?" So I'm excited. I think Gary could make the meeting and Jim could, I think, of.
Tim, Tim Fox and Councilor Marshall, they're all three are from the community. It really went very well. The Stark Development Board, we give them five thousand dollars each.
I want, yeah.
That's not that much, but the service that we give from them is excellent.
Yeah.
So they're really like county-wide economic development, they're like our economic development directors for the county. And so they can provide a lot of assistance that we can provide ourselves.
Well, they also do a lot of leads. I mean, they're working with Mega, they're with Cleveland and Akron, they're working with out-town vendors. So they're just, that's who they go to naturally. And then they can filter that off and because of those monies that they receive from you, from the counties, you know, they're tied for everybody. So they're a great partner.
Yeah, we really trust them.
Good.
Very well.
And that's, that's all I have.
And Steve's done a great job too, I want to.
Yeah, Steve, Steve has been there for twenty-seven years, he's retiring. He somewhat lives in North Canton, he lives in the Dells, the Dells. And she knows it's completely surrounded by North Canton. It's a little, little patch of land in the middle of our city. But Steve's done an excellent job. And really, Steve Picat was the individual that, that we worked with on bringing the Hoover Company here.
Oh, really?
Yes. And so when we had the first anger tenant, which was a big challenge for us, was Maris Control Power, and we had given the gantry crane as a grant to entice them to come to the facility. It was Stark Development Board that actually did the financial assessment at no cost. And so that's really what prompted us to become, you know, official partners with the Stark Development Board and paid them five thousand dollars. So for, you know, on that deal alone, it was worth, you know, twenty years of five thousand dollars for the investment.
Right.
Because they really, they facilitated bringing Maris Control Power here. And then they've still, they've been here from day one, they're paying income tax, the gantry crane, and all of the grants have been paid off and now we've got jobs here. So that's all I have.
I think it officially starts in November. So Gary, when you kind of get settled in, it'd be good.
Yeah, we were, we were the first, like thirty-seven partners.
You said that.
We were the first one in the business.
Yeah.
So we took that as a.
Well, I think they're going to make that a more proactive approach for them to have more people involved and, you know, that sort of stuff. That's great.
All right. Stand to Gary.
Sure. The current rate of payment. I understand your frustration, believe me, I do. This year is what it is. We aren't going to be able to change this year. We'll look at that next year. One of the reasons we're at where we're at, when we do our paving program, it's not strictly the paving program. We replace catch basins and we replace curb. We awarded the contract in mid-June, contract immediately goes out, he measures up all the catch basins, then he has to order them, and then they come in, and then he starts installing them. He has to start paving until we get the curb done and the catch basing stuff. He was a little late from the time we awarded the contract, like went out, started measuring some of the catch basins, put in the order, and we talked about it. One thing we can do is try to identify those streets earlier next year, get the catch basing done sooner, and just make the program a little later, or be more aware of that. That's why you're at where we're at.
And what catch basins have we done?
We have the paving program, probably over thirty today.
I think we have seventy-some altogether in the city.
Seventy, yeah, outside of the paving program, within the paving program.
Imagine if we did under seventy before.
We do a lot of catch basins.
Yeah.
Before, if we're just paving streets, they'd have been done by now. So we don't think that's the best way to help you do either. But it's frustrating to the lack.
Jim, what do you think for us to be safe? Because I'd like to get it done as early as possible. I'm sure everybody's on board with that, just to get a jump on the streets next year so we can get as many as we can get done. So do you think, what, by the end of January? I think, what's usually the deadline that you give us?
Usually, once the budget's passed, January, February, give me street snap, you know.
Well, Jim, we don't know until the winter hits us, if those streets are going to be in dire need. So, you know, you don't want to spend, waste as many either, do you?
Unless you look at that process, Jim. I mean, can we change that process? I mean, can we have someone do the catch basins? And then if you say it's no problem, someone come in and do asphalt. Do the asphalt. Because that process is not working. Probably three out of four years, and we've been doing this, it hasn't been working. One year we just blew it all completely away. So let's look at the process and maybe we need to look at something different. I know we don't have a few people we can work with, but it's got to be people out there that's going to want to do our work and give us business. We need to go, our people expect all from us on that. And I do too, to be honest with you. I think everyone else agrees with this. So let's, let's take a look at that process. I can't keep working like that every year. And it's been doing it too often.
It's difficult. The contractors are busy, catch basins are the top priority for them. We're still doing catch basins off paving program, and they started those at the beginning of the year, but they don't have those completed yet. You know, so.
Do we have people that are using the contractor to just do catch bases?
No, they don't just do catch.
You're going out there, you've got some contractors that still want them.
The contractors, I mean, the contractors that do this work do more than just catch bases. We may not limit it to that. But to try and get a contractor just to do catch bases, do them early in the year, that's going to be different.
But another thing that we might do too is look at the contract, you know, we could set, we could set timelines in this contract, but, you know, then that also, I'm sure would affect the cost of the project. So we could say, we want it done by a certain date, but then that's, you know, inherently going to increase the cost. I don't really know by how much. But I think it's something that we can look at in bidding on the project, to put that in there.
How many people bid on basins?
Two, we had two contractors bid on basins.
And that's an issue right there. Competitively, that's an issue. I mean, you get a little bit of an awkward one right there.
There are three, but typically the last couple of years, we're only at two contractors that bid in the city. Now, you know, you say we have to wait till winter. You know, you can wait until April to identify the streets, then you put together your contract, bid it out. Still not going to work before June. We're still in the same boat.
I think we could get the streets to be quicker than that because there's streets that are starting to crumble now. We'll know by next year if it's needed.
Oh, yeah.
I mean, honestly, but I think you're right. Since North Star seems to be the best bidder, at least, you know, they work well with us. I'm sure we're not dealing with municipality they're dealing with. It's just how do we get them to donate or get them to come to our way and look quicker?
Really, the best thing that we could do is if we look at the streets now, I mean, if they're in, if they're in poor condition now, they're likely going to be in worse condition.
That's a, that's a good stuff. Yeah, so maybe what we do is by the end of the year.
If we, if we can't get started on that now, start picking the streets, because really what happens, you know, I've watched this like for eleven years, and it's like, it does follow the normal process, which is, you know, okay, let's get together the streets, and then once we identify the streets, and once we put it up with it, it's just a lengthy process all the way around. But we can't get head start on it by selecting, you know, at least now, selecting some of the foul streets, get that in. And then what we can do is look at the contract to see if we want to put some deadlines. You know, I don't know if we can do this like an ultimate bid, like to put a deadline in and see what the price difference would be, you know, have.
It wasn't followed, Jim. I know we got Wood Road two, Seventh Street, Stradis. Wood Road got started, that was up there, up there since. So we're going to get some of these roads done yet this year.
Right.
That don't have catch basins.
Those are reasonable.
Involved. So whatever's left over, we should come right out of the air early this year.
Yeah.
Right? Not wait till we get catch basins to catch up, say, listen, we want those roads. And then if, if that happens, to get paved as soon as they start making product in April or late March.
We should be able to get done. I mean.
Okay, so you throw confidence, right?
Until end of November, temperature needs to be forty, forty-five degrees. We should be fine getting, getting roads done. You know, one, one option we looked at is, maybe just one year, you identify the street you want to pay, but you just do the catch basing and curb. And get that done that year, and then the next year you can go back and pave those streets.
I meant with, you know.
It's a.
Once they check, but once they dry them up, it's like, oh, maybe they did that.
No.
You have these catch basins.
Those catch basins are a mess. I mean, I didn't.
They'll patch it around the catch base.
Yeah.
It's just like, it's just like we do that now, like, you know, you go down the street, you see a catch basin.
Right.
We're, we can re-bond some of it, maybe more efficient. That's the problem, I think, is how do we, maybe do break it down. Those catch basins, I mean, we did a hundred and seventy-some last year. Can you imagine a hundred and seventy-some? And these are these huge concrete basins that go in. And that's a lot of work to watch people.
So it's the same people are doing the catch basing stuff?
Well, yeah, there's a crew that does the catch basing.
And they're like, how many people bid on just, bid on catch basing? Maybe we need to find that out.
I have about four or five contractors that I work with.
There you go. You put out, and that's a good process to change that up. Kind of what I just said like three minutes ago about get someone to do the catch basings and then come back and do the paving.
But they don't only do catch basing. And that's not, they don't make a lot of money on catch basing. So they're not going to drop all their other work just to come in and do catch basing. They're going to fit them in with their other, you know, it's going to, it's filler work for them.
Yeah.
When you, if you're just hiring a contractor to do catch basing.
Thanks.
What if, you know, Mike Batterell has to threaten a contractor and say, well, I guess we'll just find somebody else. No, they'll come in. But those are off the paving program, those are catch basins that he's doing separate. You know, and he has trouble getting contractors to do that. So it's.
Yeah, it's just a lower of the challenge of the, because we want to improve it, and your message is.
Well, if you doubt you want to prove it, you're not, that's not. I gotta think there are people out there that, that want work for God's sake. I mean, they're wanting money, it's good money. We're looking at three or four people.
Yeah. Yeah, and it's, and it's, we do want to work for it.
A lot of people want work.
Yeah. And it's just that there's a, like Jim was saying, when you're looking at a big paving project, it really is about the, you know, we have been working on replacing the catch basins, the city's program aside from doing a paving project, which has really worked really well. And if we get, you know, those in place, but then we're also compounding it by, hey, we're going to pave the street. Well, let's do the catch bases too. And hey, let's have the contractor doing, doing the paving. You know, it's very exciting.
Well, we have so many catch bases, that's what I know that's long and stuck to replace. I mean, I had said twice two minutes ago, another one.
Yeah, and as we, as we replace these, the good thing is, we used to replace them with brick with.
Right.
So we've put all this salt now, and some of them, they were going to last in five years.
Right.
They're just subsiding. So now these brick casks all last like thirty, forty years, right? It's not longer.
Look, plus we're using less salt. It's part of the problem that we're doing curbs on my spade, because the salt, right, destroy those curbs. Those curbs should last a lot longer than they did.
Right.
Those curbs probably are twenty-five years old.
No.
If we are replacing them.
Salted and concrete.
They don't. So maybe you can just be more efficient.
Thanks, Gary.
Okay, thank you for that. Director.
Permits and development. Nothing other than what's been discussed already. Thanks, Gary. I'm sorry?
Um, no, fourteen.
All right. That's it. Okay, most good, Jerry. Next meeting. We are on schedule four. Okay, we have the, we will not be meeting next Monday, the seventeenth. We'll be having a committee and a legislative meeting on the twenty-fourth. And then we will not be meeting on the thirty-first as well. And I think we'll call for that to be a motion in a second to move the, or to not have a meeting on the thirty-first. That's the thing. In a second?
So we don't, no, no.
It doesn't hurt?
Yeah, it doesn't hurt.
It's fine.
Second. All right, in a second. Those flags say aye. All right, those both same sign, motion carries.
Yeah.
Both will do a aye. Click. Those flags say aye. Those both same sign, Richard. What?
I don't personally.
Congratulations. You guys are world record.
I'm so sorry. I'm so sorry. My mom. I have to go, maybe. I'm sorry. You sold them for half. Jessica's. Thank you. Yeah, you follow me. Yeah, I'm very grateful. Thank you. That was a great work.
And I would like to say, so, thank you. And are you doing?
Good for all of you.
Just.
Yes.
Thank you. Congratulations. If we're going to get enough, we have to make it. We have a little amazing part.
Right there, Michelle.
Can you hear? Huh? Can you hear? Did that blow up? I think it's a little loud.
I don't know if you can hear it right there.
Yeah.
Well, we still have to transpire.
Yeah. Okay. Because I, and I got a problem up there. Well, I have a contract, you have to. I mean, they had a few problems for life, problems. Two months. And recently, I don't know what was made of it. Yeah, it was the same.
So.
I think we got. They moved us. I already took some.
Yeah, yeah.
It's really. For well, you do shop and it slows down a lot. So we want to. What do you want to ask for? Sure. Yeah. What you go to?
Really? Like a Marshall was direct. We were, we were, we should watch. Is that the one? We need to watch the children. We need to watch.
Those are the times where I'm, 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 I'm. Long. The fourth time. It's like, I'm in a room. I'm just saying, I'm, 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 I'm,